That'll do it.
All right, welcome everyone to the June 3rd, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Well, let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Atkins?
Present.
Commissioner Ballard?
Here.
Commissioner Finch? Commissioner Sullivan?
Here.
Commissioner Shelby?
Here.
Commissioner Rutledge?
Here.
And Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I will now read the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shtehopes people and their successors, the Talalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they've hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society. All right, and with that, let's move on to approval of minutes. Does anyone have any edits for the minutes?
We do not, I don't believe we have minutes in your packet today.
Yeah.
They're outstanding.
They're outstanding. We'll have two weeks for you. We're our faithful administrative assistant is out on leave for a little bit to make some of these things challenging. We will catch up with two sets of minutes at the commission's next meeting. Everything is online in the meantime, so you can have literally all of the minutes.
All right. And let's move on to reports of commissioners. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report? Well, with that, if no one else would like to go, I have a short little speech or comments for my report. As we begin my final meeting with the Everett Planning Commission, this marks the end of over six years of time serving on various city boards and commissions for myself. For my time as Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee on Housing and Community Development, to chairing the Rethink Housing Committee in 2021, and now being Vice Chair of this esteemed commission, I've done everything I can to ensure that we face this region-wide housing crisis head-on, that we understand the impacts of the decisions we make on the most vulnerable amongst us. I'm honored to have had the opportunity to shape the future of Everett through this service. The final recommended draft of the Everett 2044 Comprehensive Plan represents a city and a plan that is putting people first, that is ensuring that we tackle the depth of this housing crisis head-on. About 10 years ago, I was still living at the old cocoon house over near the new Kaiser building. I remember thinking to myself how alone I felt, how scared I felt. But this city picked me up and got me on my feet. Ever since then, I've made it my life's mission to do all I can to prevent others from falling into the same cycle of homelessness I found myself in. I'm proud of the work we have done. I'm proud of the Everett 2044 Plan and all that we've managed to accomplish over the past few years. I am proud to have been a part of this, and thank you to all the staff who have worked on this over the years, and thank you to my fellow commissioners for your hours of insight, debate, and discussion. I know we all want the best thing for this magnificent city we call home. Thank you. And so with that, we're now on to staff comment.
Along the same lines, Commissioner, Vice Chair Commissioner Atkins just wanted to extend the deep appreciation from staff and on behalf of the commission and the City of Everett for your four years of service. I think you joined this commission in February of 2021, a difficult time to join any body, but especially one that was facing a lot of work ahead of it. It's been, most of my time here has been with you on the commission. You've had a near-perfect attendance record and excellent participation. It's clear that throughout your whole time here that you've paid close attention, that you've read the materials, you've given some really insightful comments, suggestions, and feedback, questions as well, all of which is exactly what we need as staff to help improve the product that we bring to the Planning Commission every day. You mentioned some of the other boards and commissions. You're a busy person. A lot of it is with a volunteer service and with a real eye towards improving your community. So on behalf of staff and if I can, the City of Everett, I want to extend you a great big thank you and wish you well on your next endeavors. And you will never be a stranger in these chambers and welcome any comments and suggestions as we go down this path. It's great that we are able to close out this project with you on it. You were here for the very first scoping meeting and to be able to see through what I think is one of the most significant kind of planning projects that Everett has seen in a long time. Thank you. We have a certificate and a card for you.
Commissioner Finch, you get to sign it afterwards.
No further staff comments.
We do have a few online, so I will check with David Koenig. If you, are you wanting to make comment under item three or four? Four is the public hearing.
The public hear-
Okay, thank you. Sabrina, would you like to speak for item three or four? Sabrina? Okay, we'll move to the caller with the number ending in 6531. Would you like to speak on item three or four, public hearing?
That's Dave.
Pardon me?
Uh, Dave, I'm listening to you on the phone, not on the internet.
Okay, are you wanting to speak on the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that. With that, we'll end the public comment period for just the under reports and comments, and we'll move on to item number four, public hearing for Everett 2044. At this time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
And so moved, we've got some options with how we run this meeting, basically the public hearing and staff can run through some of the changes and topics that we've covered since the last draft. So we're working on a May 30 final draft, which has been transmitted to the city council, and they'll be taking that up tomorrow, and it's been provided to you as well. Staff can run through the changes from the May 7 and, or April 7 and May 10 books of the complete review draft. Answer any questions you have, and then we can go into the public hearing. We can do the public hearing first and then have some deliberations. I'm okay either way. Sometimes the commenters get the benefit of hearing some of the discussion back and forth, so you're prerogative.
Is anyone here on a strict timeline for commenting? Anyone that wishes to comment? Okay, yeah, I think let's have staff review the changes.
So on, I will just go to the Everett 2044 webpage and run through some of the materials. I'll start with orientation of where we're at in the process. So very final stage here. We have got, as I mentioned, a proposed ordinances and exhibits which have been transmitted to the Planning Commission and the council. They're dated May 30th, and they are all available, as with all of the rest of the materials, ever@wad.gov/2044. You can see here, we've got the proposed ordinance adopting Everett 2044 Comprehensive Plan, and the exhibit to that is the proposed Comprehensive Plan dated May 30th. Then we also have a housing appendix and a transportation appendix that I believe are, the housing appendix is revised. The transportation appendix was added after the last draft of the plan. Then we have the proposed ordinance adopting the Everett 2044 Development Regulation Amendments. And Exhibit 1 to that ordinance is the Everett 2044 Development Regulations. We also have a change report, which I'll cover here next, which goes over in summary form, the major changes, substantive changes from the April 7 and May 10 drafts. And the zoning map, and we've also added a memo on specific amendment requests disposition. You'll remember back to June of 2023, we had a specific amendment request application period. We received a number and processed through the Planning Commission and the council, decided which ones of those to forward for consideration in the periodic update. And I think we wound up with nine, or maybe it was 11, specific amendments. Some were grouped, like amendments requests were grouped into packages. And those have all either been fully implemented or partially implemented in the periodic update. And the specific amendment requests disposition memo details exactly what the original request was and where we wound up when this May 30th draft. Previous materials, if anybody is interested, are farther down below, so you can see comparisons, but all of the currently active documents are here up top. Final environmental impact statement is the last piece. That was completed today, but having some technical difficulties and could not get that posted and published, but I can report to you what is included in it. There was some housing needs analysis and land capacity analysis. Essentially, the final environmental impact statement amends and adjusts the draft environmental impact statement that was released on April 7. Not much of the analysis has changed. We've responded to a couple of comments of the comments that we've received during the DSEIS comment period. 95% of them were to the substance of the plan and the regulations, and we've addressed all of those and gone through. We have responses to the comments, which will be an appendix to the final environmental impact statement. There were a few comments on the content of the environmental impact statement itself. Most of those were from Puget Sound Regional Council and from the Department of Commerce. We've addressed those mostly through including a housing needs analysis and land capacity analysis in as an appendix to the final environmental impact statement. So there have been a couple of, I would call them minor corrections to the body of the draft supplemental environmental impact statement, and then the addition of the housing needs analysis, which is on this screen, so it's already available right here, this housing appendix. And then the responses to the comments. So you'll see all of those, if not later tonight, tomorrow morning will be posted to ever@wad.gov/2044. I think that wraps up all of the materials available to you. We have a proposed resolution for your consideration this evening that would make a recommendation on the periodic update of Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations. Otherwise, with how to go tonight, we've got a change report of what has been changed from April 7 and May 10. There's been some substantive changes, most of them in response to public comment. And then we'd be happy to cover any questions or other points of discussion that the commission may have, and we can hear from the public and do some more discussions. That sound okay overall? Okay, here's the change report. Some of these are, I wouldn't call them very impactful. Most of the definitions, one, we're just trying to clarify things. I will not cover, I don't think, any of these as being particularly important. But stop me if you see anything. Chapter 1905, this is the uses and the use matrices, just a couple of changes here as part of a zoning map change to West Muckelteo Boulevard between Sound Avenue and Upland Avenue. This had been a connector geography and had a UR4 urban residential four-floor designation to it. The community requested and the council agreed to reduce that zoning to neighborhood residential. There was a lot of interest in having kind of a mixed-use commercial opportunities and a little node at that end of West Muckelteo Boulevard, although the comfort level among the community was lower than MU4, the mixed urban four-zone, and all of the uses and development intensity that that could allow. So the council members working on this came up with an idea to designate a short stretch of West Muckelteo Boulevard as the neighborhood commercial designation. Currently, as framed, the neighborhood commercial is corner lots throughout the city, and there are some, I think the Soundview Deli, and then some commercial, current commercial uses next to it that are not on corner lots, but the community wanted to see some opportunities for commercial development there, limited-scale neighborhood serving. So we added West Muckelteo Boulevard between Sound and Upland to the list of locations that would allow neighborhood commercial uses. We also, we've been tinkering quite a bit with neighborhood commercial, and we are not quite done yet. I should say the council is not quite done yet. We're supporting small group of council members that have been working on coming to kind of a compromise around locations and uses. For those of you on the commission that were here for the discussions around home occupations a couple of years ago, it reminds me a lot of that. This is a new type of, of opportunity for non-residential development in some potentially quiet residential streets, and that's something that the council wants to be very careful with. So we continue to meet with them, and I think this could go all the way up to the last day before a satisfactory compromise is reached. That compromise could be exactly where we are today, or it could be a little bit more restrictive, or it could be a little bit more permissive. In the meantime, on the staff side, we continue to work through, meet a couple of times a week and try to work through different development potentials, or we get questions to the planning line of, will I be able to do this or that? And so we get some examples of things like bike shops or art studios or music lessons. I think were some of the ones that we have looked at. There's a list of uses for neighborhood commercial that is fairly specific, at least on the retail sales and services side. And it was missing some things that everybody agreed would be a good fit for neighborhood commercial. And so to accommodate the potential of things that we haven't thought of yet, but have some administrative discretion to determine whether it would be compatible with the neighborhood and appropriate for the neighborhood commercial, we added or similar to the list of subcategories of retail sales and services. And then also, and other use is not listed above, if compatible with surrounding properties in the immediate vicinity. That language was borrowed from an existing provision, adaptive reuse of non-residential buildings, which is allowed and is not unlike neighborhood commercial, but only for existing commercial buildings that may have lost their non-conforming status or wanted to change uses. So in that adaptive reuse of non-residential buildings, there is this other use is not listed if compatible. We borrowed that language for neighborhood commercial. We would use the comprehensive plan policies and a good planner's common sense to make sure that we use that administrative authority judiciously. Again, this is subject to review by the council. Last, with accessory dwelling units, last for 1905. Those are now out of the residential use table. It was very confusing that we had accessory dwelling units only for the neighborhood residential constrained zone. We do have a definition for accessory dwelling units in chapter 1904 with the definitions, and that is considered a subtype of dwelling units. And that term is used in a couple of places for exemptions or reductions, including frontage improvements will apply to all residential development, except the addition of up to two accessory dwelling units with an existing principal dwelling to remain. Impact fees, I think, we'll also use it. Park impact fees, for example, is about $1,000 a bedroom, and there's a state law that requires that impact fees for accessory dwelling units under the state's definition of what an accessory dwelling unit is, be charged no more than 50% of the impact fees for the principal unit. Thank you to public comment for pointing that one out, Todd. And so that was actually an existing shortcoming in our code and one that we were able to catch with this update. So park impact fees will be 50% of the principal dwelling units fee. You will not find that in the May 30th version. I forgot to put it in there. We will get it in before this thing gets adopted, though. So that is kind of where accessory dwelling units wound up. I went line by line to make sure that if you can build it now in a certain place with a certain fee structure, you will be able to build that accessory dwelling unit under the new code in that place and with that fee structure. Couple other places where accessory dwelling units were getting tripped up was in the rear setback on non-alley lots. I think had a reduced rear setback for accessory dwelling units down to five feet, where it was 20 feet for principal dwelling. I think we've got that rear setback on non-alley lots down to five feet for all buildings. So that one is solved, and it is no longer limited to 24 feet as it currently is for the accessory dwelling units. So you could build up to the height of the zone within those setback areas. Parking regulations were also advantageous for accessory dwelling units under existing code. And thanks to the state legislature for passing Senate Bill 5184, I think it is, the, the May 10th parking chapter that was part of Book 2 as a reduction of parking requirements sufficient to get us to that do-no-harm-to-accessory-dwelling-unit standard. So I still have a mostly finished memo that I will put out, just so that folks can follow that and double-check our work. But I think we've accomplished the mission of not hampering accessory dwelling units as a result of this update. Any questions so far? Chapter 1906, which deals with residential densities and setbacks, building setbacks. We have reduced, we had this conversation in these chambers about a month ago. We've reduced the rear building setbacks in the neighborhood residential and UR4 zones from 10 feet to five feet. There is a minimum residential development requirement of, I believe it's three units, three attached units in our bigger zones. I think that's from UR7 and MU7 on up and higher. There are some cases where that may not be achievable, or that may not be a good idea, maybe a mixed-use development or something like that. So we added that to be modifiable. Modifiable means that by application, a development could request relief from the standard and would just have to show that the result would be equal or superior to conformance with the standard and that it meets the intent of the standard being modified. Mentioned the accessory dwelling units already. That's what this NRC zone permitted up to two accessory dwelling units is about. 1908, our neighborhood residential development standards had a big revision to the site design section. We used to have the requirement, talked a lot about that with this commission over the last couple of meetings. We had a requirement that all dwellings in neighborhood residential face the street, face a shared yard, or we were considering having it allowed to face an addressed alley as well. Heard a lot of comment and feedback from the development community on the constraints that that would place on development and site design and everything. So reviewing our, our, our goals and policies as the guiding light, especially in the design and development section, conferring with staff and others and listening and going through all of the public comment. The priority in that site planning and the, what I call the warm embrace to the public street is, is the homes that are on the public street, and less so with our deep lots, those that are farther back. I think there still is an argument that every, every home should have a good and clear pedestrian orientation and eyes on the street or the alley or the driveway as it would be. But at the same time, heard loud and clear the focus on, on housing availability here. So we've removed the requirement that that internal to a larger lot that dwellings would need to face a shared yard. But dwellings within 30 feet of a public street would still have that requirement to face the street. Face the street means including one of a set of five or six or seven front entrance and porch types that are later down in the chapter. Also removed the requirement for at least one dwelling on a lot to face the street. And private and shared yards, did a little work to that mainly to simplify and increase the flexibility at least a little bit. Dwellings no longer have to front on or have any particular spatial relationship to a private yard or a shared yard. We do still, would still require that there be either a private yard, and that would be eight feet minimum any direction, and I think 80 feet of total square feet of total area. And if you don't have a private yard, then you can group units together into a shared yard. And the shared yard is something like 300 square feet for up to five units, and then 10% of the lot for more than five units. All of that is modifiable if we get into a situation that we had not accounted for. I'm thinking of mixed developments with half private yards and half shared yards, and does 10% make sense in all of that? At some point, we have to stop thinking of every possible permutation in the city and rely on modifications to get it right, and then come back here to tweak things. But at least for now, so that's what we have for the private yards and the shared yards. The shared yard could be in a different part of the development than the dwelling that it's serving, but it would need to be connected by a continuous pedestrian path that does not involve crossing a public right-of-way. Private yards can be on the roof. Shared yards need to be on the ground. No requirements written in there for what a shared or a private yard is, but there are requirements for what it is not, which is driveways, pathways, parking lots, buildings, and critical areas are their buffers. It could be in any one of the setbacks or include any one of the setbacks if there is a setback. So that's where we're at on shared and private yards and orientation. Any questions there? Okay. There is a requirement for minimum ground floor habitable space depth, and again, through conversations with, especially thinking of townhouses here, we reduced that from 20 feet to 12 feet to match common townhouse floor plans for the ground floor, which oftentimes will have a garage, a stairwell, and then that leaves one quadrant of the unit for a room. 20 feet could be pretty restrictive on this, on the design there, but 12 feet would work and provide some habitable space on the ground floor. The garage regulations in 19, I'll skip a couple that are not too exciting. The garage regulations in 1908060. They currently say that they front the street, and this is existing language and code. The streets are defined in chapter 1904 as public or private thoroughfares. But as I understand it, we do not typically apply those requirements to private streets, AKA driveways. So we just wanted to make that clear and line up with how we've been implementing those regulations. Okay. Moving on down to 1909, this is the development standards for what is not. Moving on down to nineteen oh nine, this is the uh development standards for what is not nineteen oh eight. Which is townhouses detached units and all development in the neighborhood residential zone. That's what nineteen oh eight is, nineteen oh nine is everything else. So development in uh zones that are not neighborhood residential. And then unless their townhouses are detached uh houses in those bigger zones. We have the inclusionary zoning uh requirement in parts of South Everett around Casino Road and Airport Road. Uh displacement mitigation tool. There had been kind of a cliff at uh at eight between eight and nine units that we were looking to soften a little bit. By cliff, I mean we had uh exempt from the inclusionary uh zoning requirement up to eight units. And then you'd start calculating all the, starting from unit one. And so at your ninth unit, two of them would need to be uh affordable, whereas eight units would not need to have any. Uh, staff prefers avoiding those kinds of um hard lines. Because then you'll you're you're really disincentivizing someone from adding a ninth unit potentially. So we went to this more of a stair step here and with some math, I think I got this table right. Where at six units, you'd be exempt uh projects that delivered up to six units. And then from seven units to. Nope, this isn't right, because it, oh, is it right? I'm not sure if the chart is right. You're uh up to fifteen units is uh half of the requirement. And then you would pick up from fifteen units on at the full requirement. I feel like this black line should go a little bit farther before going up. I will double check that and reissue this memo if the chart is not right, but the words are correct. Full implementation of it beginning at sixteen units. Which also matches where eligibility for the multifamily tax exemption starts. So that's the revision to inclusionary zoning. We also added an option to defer payment of the inclusionary zoning alternative compliance, which is the fee in lieu. Which is currently set at fifteen dollars per square foot of gross floor area for the residential development. That fifteen dollars a square foot is also half off for developments between seven and fourteen fifteen, excuse me, uh dwelling units. Um, so that alternative compliance fee in lieu um projects are usually at their toughest financing during construction. And right up to certificate of occupancy when the revenue starts to come back to repay those financing costs. And so uh that should be really helpful to uh the the residential developers to have this deferred payment option. It may include a lien just to make sure that we get the payment at the end. Um, but that gets us past the the toughest part in a development financing. Heard from the architect community and and the bigger building development community. You've heard it before. We've heard it a lot about um limit limiting upper floor plates. Um, we have had already trimmed down those upper floor plate modulation regulations substantially. Had left only half of the building eight feet deep with the intent of having some sort of an amenity space or a balcony overlooking the street. Heard some negative feedback on that as well. And um and it's something that staff was comfortable with dropping the rest of it. So now uh these multi-story buildings can go straight up.
Would you mind explaining the fee in lieu mechanics?
Yes. Fee in lieu for inclusionary zoning, so you can either provide the units as part of your project. And a covenant would be placed on the uh land running with it for fifty years. Requiring that the dwelling units be maintained at eighty percent or sixty percent area median income affordability level for that fifty-year period. Uh, there's also the option for development to pay a fee in lieu of fifteen dollars per square foot of the floor area. Uh, that would go into an affordable housing fund to create those units as part of a different development. The deferred payment just says when you pay the fee, otherwise normally that would be due at probably building permit issuance.
And when does the covenant have to be placed on the property?
Probably building permit issuance.
So there's a fork in the road when the permits issued.
Yeah, yeah. I'd have to check. I, yeah. There, yes. I would expect a development to have chosen pretty early on which way that they're gonna wanna go, but. On the, on the cost. Do you like a, or do you have an example or a breakdown of how much this is adding to the cost of the project? Yeah, I assume a thousand square feet for one dwelling would be a reasonable assumption. So fifteen thousand dollars to to a dwelling unit. Which is in the ballpark of our other impact fees. Maybe all of the other ones combined, I think parks is around. Twenty-five hundred for a dwelling unit. Um, traffic is six or seven thousand. Schools are three or four thousand. So maybe it would be about doubling what the impact fees for those are. In that area. You can also, the cost of providing the dwelling unit varies based on your. We would try to make, and this, there's a whole portfolio of ways to get to the affordable housing. Um, there is incentive-based multifamily tax exemption. There's requirements like the inclusionary zoning. There are other uh incentives, I think fee reductions as well. The easier that all of that is to administer by a a a project owner, a building owner, a property owner. The less of a negative that will be to them. And that's something that's on the city to build a a good uh administrative system. And it's something that we've started to work on on the MFTE side, but really wanna take that to another level. As this uh these types of income restricted units multiply. So that's things like your annual compliance, that's things like uh helping match uh prospective tenants to units and all of that. The forgone rent is probably pretty modest. I think most of the reason that folks might prefer to do the fee in lieu instead. Is the administrative compliance over a long period, also some financing. Um, you now have a restriction and whether that is a big financial uh drag or not. It is a restriction and I think finance, finance, financiers um don't love that sometimes. And that might reflect be reflected in costs. But tough to tell and something that we can help at least on the on the city side, reduce the administrative burden. Commentize?
I, yeah, I I mean, I I don't wanna repeat the last time, but my my concern is, I mean, this, when I look at. Different projects across the country and and just pretty simple searches, you know, with the the Harvard uh studies and the MIT studies and NYU. I mean, this pro- this program is not. Certainly not successful. I I think the best you could call it would be a mixed bag. It's really dependent on the expertise of the team managing it and then getting the incentives right. But it seems like it more frequently does more damage. Not only does it underproduce what you're hoping to get as uh affordable housing. But it also damages the actual uh market rate housing as well and increases that. So I'm just wondering how we're. Very compelling. The the people in the community that came out here certainly deserve something. I feel like this is not what they deserve. I feel like this is going to hurt them. Um, and I think it's going to actually reduce development in that community to a way that's not gonna benefit them at all.
Yeah, this was a really tough one. We've talked through, I've read many of the same studies and have um some of the same concerns. We will be almost immediately starting to work on sub-area planning in that part of the city. Part of the request uh from the community was. That this could potentially be a an interim measure. Um, the original request from the Casino Road Working Group was to delay the whole upzone. While uh while we sorted out the affordability and displacement concerns. That's not something that uh I thought would have been good for the community either uh and was the right way to go for the city. Um, so this was kind of a a compromise there to put this into place, to provide a little bit of a backstop. And I, it is really tough to tell. I there. The research is mixed. A lot of it depends on how well the program is set up. I will say that we plan to continue to monitor this very closely. And that we will be in a planning process almost immediately in the exact part of town that this is covering. And a big part of that planning process is gonna be around affordable housing. So this is by no means the end of that conversation.
Yeah, I, well, first, I I think that they. The group proposing this knew exactly what they were doing and they chose to do this the way they did it, so it would stop development. So maybe they could figure it out, but I feel like it was a backdoor, very, very dishonest thing to do to that community. Um, and I, and one of the greatest components on whether this uh program is successful is in a increasing market. And I certainly, I mean, that it, that's pretty consistent, too. If you read that, why does this work in the areas that it worked? Because it was an increasing market. I'm pretty, not pretty sure that you have that, or you're close.
Yeah, there's a consistency with our neighbors thing, too. Uh, that was another thing that changed during this project um was Snohomish County and Model Code Partnership both coming out with the same recommendation. So more work to be done with those partners as well as we all try to figure out a way out of the housing affordability crisis. And uh and displacement concerns that we have. I do like that there seems to be broad agreement on the goals at least and that it's more of the which is the right method to get there. So that's at least a a good framing.
Yeah, I I just wanna say I do echo Commissioner Ballard's concerns. Um, and I, I I will just offer the comment, but you know, temporary solutions have a nasty habit of becoming permanent. And that would just be of concern to me.
Yeah.
Is it possible to put a sunset on it? As part of this?
Yes.
I mean, maybe we do that. And and sunset it after three, five years? And see how it goes. I mean, we want it, we can keep it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I appreciate the thoughts, the, I mean, I guess. Right now, the uh, again, it's just a group of people that have not had very kind focus in their community. And I feel like we're basically delaying that and playing a little bit of roulette. Uh, you know, so it's not an easy decision. I'm not saying I have the answers, but I just looking at this, just to me, it was a little bit out of left field. And I feel like the way it's being implemented is just about the harshest way to ensure it won't ensure uh or to be successful. Um, the softening is great. It would be a small part of it. But, you know, I think, you know, there were some recommendations, I think, trying to increase the number of units before it kicks in, which would be a little more fair to. You know, the the groups that's in there, I mean. You know, my, and my, my mind continues on, I mean, part of that program that I'm concerned is you're taking away. Possibility to have equity in the properties that are out there by putting it into this program. Cause it'll make it harder to develop. It'll be more specific to the low income, you know. Generally, those projects don't end up being townhouses that are purchased. They put them in kind of a complete uh in a system where they're just forced to continue to rent uh with no relief, so. Again.
So at the end of this meeting will be, um, you will be considering and taking action on a resolution that will communicate your recommendation to the. Excuse me, to the council. Um, that recommendation can have some nuance to it. It can uh. Uh, I've always thought this was a good opportunity. We've talked about an enormous amount and variety of topics over the course of this. And um, we are on a a clock that is ticking and we do need to get this done. But it uh it would be great to hear the types of things that you would like to see us work more on. Maybe that it was satisfactory, but you would like to see more effort in the near future. It could be a recommendation to put a sunset on it or to not do it, or it could be just a recommendation to watch this closely. Recommendation is to the council ultimately. Okay. Building modulation. Straight up. Uh, added. Uh, on recommendation of surface water, our surface water team um. Restrictions on exterior materials that are cor- that could corrode or leach heavy metals into the stormwater system. And then into our uh streams and Puget Sound. Um, so we added in a couple place this uh restriction on uh leachable and corrosive exterior materials. I learned that one of them is galvanized metal, whatever galvanizing is, releases some heavy metals. So you can still have those things, but they would need to be somehow sealed in a way that wouldn't uh be releasing that. Uh, transparency was another one that gets a lot of attention. Um, we have requirements depending on street designations at the high end for streets designated TOD transit oriented development. Which there are not very many of Pacific is one, and then around Everett Station uh is most of the TOD streets. Those have a requirement that ninety percent of the uh building facade between two and ten feet be transparent. And then that is sixty percent for pedestrian designated streets and forty-five percent for a couple other streets that aren't as common. Pedestrian designated streets are the most common and that's the big ones like Evergreen Way and Broadway and Everett Mallway. Uh, a- as well as a lot of downtown Everett. So between the energy code, the cost, building flexibility and everything, we pretty consistently get requests to reduce the transparency. And and did again in this late uh part of the uh update process. We put uh did a little bit of that by reducing, and this was a comment that was actually in our system from twenty twenty-one. From a staff that wasn't even there before noting that the part in between eight and ten feet is sometimes mechanical equipment. Or the, you know, it's above the ceiling basically and wouldn't be appropriate for transparency. So we've switched from two to eight, two to ten feet to two to eight feet instead, which is a. Twenty fifteen percent, I think it was, reduction in the overall transparency without changing those other numbers. Uh, meeting with staff this morning, um. They were thinking that we'd probably be better reducing the horizontal requirement than the height. Because a lot of developers actually go with higher glass and are asking for a modification to shift some of the required horizontal. To um vertical. Plus, most of those ground floors are supposed to be fifteen feet for commercial options. Um, so little. This is a, almost uh always get some sort of a modification. But I'll, I'll leave it at that. It was a reduction. I think we're gonna look at it a little bit closer and maybe shift tweak that a little bit. But reduction of transparency requirements of roughly fifteen percent is what we have in there. Okay, ground level surface parking between buildings and streets. So these uh were in three or four different places in code. And in the last run through, um, it had always been a little bit clunky. And so we've consolidated those requirements into one place and then added a graphic to explain it. Um, it had in the April seven draft, there had been one, this came from the Model Code Partnership work. That um prohibited ground level surface parking in the mixed-use zones. Chapter nine is not really the right place for that because chapter nine deals with buildings. And this is a surface and a site planning thing, not a building design thing. And it's a parking thing, so it probably should go in the parking chapter. So we moved it out of uh chapter nine and into chapter thirty-four, which is parking. Uh, there had also been in chapter thirty-four also uh already a prohibition on surface parking between multifamily buildings and public streets. And then also one between non-residential streets and Broadway and Evergreen Way. All three of them together uh restricted this citywide, except for neighborhood residential zones. Or otherwise, where you have a driveway, um, you can still park in your driveway between the uh building in the street. So there's the graphic trying to illustrate that. We get a lot of confusion and um what is between the building and the street. I think the current uh, the current text says between the building closest to the public. Parking cannot be closer to the public street than the building closest to the public. Parking cannot be closer to the public street than the building closest to the public street. Um, that doesn't really always mean between the building and the street. It could mean next to the building, but closer than, which isn't as much of a problem, I think. We do want to have that direct visibility from the street into the building uh, and that street presence. Um, so this clarifies that it's kind of the shortest line from a building to the street uh, is where it's restricted. And I noticed that on the little off kilter building down here, there should probably be some yellow between the street. That that building in the street uh, on the downside there. Port compatibility overlay section, I think it was after April seven that that got settled and sorted out between Rucker Hill. And um, the port of Everett, there have been no changes since that. I think we've talked about it here uh, since then. Uh, chapter twenty-two heights, we added, uh, this was another comment about um, density bonus for religious organizations. And we've long said we don't limit density, so there's really no bonus for us to give. It's a state law that we have to provide a process to do so. Um, kind of an aha moment that height equals density in a way, if you don't regulate density. So why not do an extra bonus height floor of height for development of affordable housing for low income households? On uh, religious property. Then uh, Port of Everett um, had a good catch on our industrial waterfront height uh, framework. So reminder on this, we are, since we're ditching the building height map. That has different heights for different places, even in the same zone. That means that the light industrial and heavy industrial zones. Have to go from the current nine or so different height limits that they have to one. We rounded it up to a pretty high number, recognizing that industrial development doesn't often reach for the sky. Um, that's just fine in a place like uh, Southwest Everett Industrial Center, um, which isn't in between. Anybody's view and the thing they're viewing, but on the waterfront uh, uh, heights are a little bit more of a touchy subject. So we had developed a uh, some geometry that said that the height limit in this, the area between the railroad tracks. And the water around the peninsula of North Everett would go from uh, ten feet below the center line of the street. On top of the bluff, usually Grand Avenue and then West Marine View Drive, um, I think. And uh, and then to a plane down to forty feet above the ordinary high watermark. That wound winds up being in the forty to sixty foot height limit range. That's in the neighborhood of what the height limit is, if you look at the various current zones along that waterfront. Um, Port of Everett uh, correctly saw that that was a reduction of the height. Limit uh, on, on the port property, which was a concern to them. We had removed the two floor bonus height from the industrial waterfront height area earlier, and so as a way to get that um. Height limit back to where it was on port property, we added back the two floor bonus height. Uh, checking with port staff today, maybe that still doesn't get us all the way there. So that's another one that we're gonna take uh, one last look at. This is the last one. This is a repeat of the surface parking thing, just because it was in both chapter nine and chapter thirty-four. And then the zoning map. So did I already talk through this? I think I did because of the neighborhood commercial thing, but uh, Edgewater Neighborhood in the UR four. Now looks like that. These little dots show the parcels that would be eligible for neighborhood commercial under uh, the amended language. And then. Uh, Legion Division two and Mount Baker something uh, is the one over here and here. So these were reduced from UR four uh, to NR. Those were both council directed changes in the last couple of weeks. That's the change report. I have um, the full documents up on PDF and uh, happy to take questions. We can go to the public hearing. I turn it over to you.
Any further questions?
I have one question on the port height that you just talked about. So. Is that talking about permanent structures that get built in that area? I'm wondering if there's anything around something more temporary or something that's more. Equipment based versus building based?
Yes, as I understand it, equipment would be exempt from the height limit, so would be able to exceed that. As I understand it, a crane being a mobile, mobile thing uh, is one of those types of equipment.
Any further questions? Would someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing?
Some moved. Second.
All right. And I forgot, do we have to take a roll call vote on this?
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutledge?
Yes.
And Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
All right, I have some instructions for our. Uh, commentators, to those of you, uh, you joining us remotely, please mute your microphone, or if you are calling in mute. Your phone by pressing star six. At each opportunity for public comments, I will ask if anyone wants to speak. If you are participating remotely and would like to provide public comment. Unmute your microphone or press star six on your phone. Please provide your name for the record. When you're done, please mute again. If you are in attendance and would like to comment, please fill out a speaker sign in sheet located on the table by the front door. Um, and with that, we'll move on to our first in-person commentators, uh, starting with. I'm so sorry, um, Jean Sadi Hewitt. Okay, I'm so sorry. I have a hard time reading the cursive of that J. Uh, they have three minutes, right? Okay.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Jean Sadi Hewitt. I'm the resident of the Norton Grand Overlay and Vice Chair of the Historical Commission. Um, speaking tonight representing my neighbors in the Norton Grand Historic Overlay. We have a petition signed by neighbors I will be forwarding shortly. I'd like to acknowledge and thank the planning department who have been working tirelessly to develop a plan. In conjunction with private and pub and. Public input and despite budget and staff cuts, they've done a wonderful job. And thank you, Commissioner Atkins, for your work as well. Last year, there was a joint meeting between the historical and planning commissions regarding the comprehensive plan. One topic discussed was creating buffer zones alongside historic overlays with lowered heights to preserve our limited historic resources. And mitigate the impact of some new development. Work has been done by planning and the historical commission to create and preserve some areas, which is appreciated. Upon reviewing the final plan released on Friday, there are still a few critical areas along the west side of Rucker Avenue. From thirty-second to thirty-seventh, uh, along, across the alley from the Norton Grand Historic Overlay. And around the Donovan District that both need a buffer zone or transition zone. Proposed rezoning along the west side of Rucker will increase heights. In addition to the way the, the heights are measured, not by requiring it to be measured on the sidewalk in front, but an average. From the lot, um, the proposed developments could overwhelm the adjoining historic one and two story. Homes and around the Donovan District, the transition is up to fifteen stories. So imagine standing in your backyard and having seven stories. It's not just the heights that overshadow the homes, the historic homes. Any access to parking and services must go through the alleys. Creating traffic noise and activity that diminishes the home's chara- character and value. It also creates an environment for their eventual demise through conversions and sales. So during the Metro Everett revisions, when heights were increased, uh, cre- increased along Rucker. Um, overlay neighbors were told by the planning department, not these current planning department. Um, when the comprehensive plan was up for revision and the need for a buffer zone is addressed, that the lower heights would be addressed as well. So we asked the planning department and you commissioners to create a buffer transition zone by changing the Q current UR. Four zoning. To RU four zoning. At its corresponding heights along the west side of Rucker from thirty-second to thirty-seventh. The Norton Grand Overlay is already accommodating a new two hundred plus affordable apartment complex. And a proposed upzone along Norton. Um, that are going to dramatically increase traffic in the overlay, and this combined with the additional traffic. Um, in the alleys will radically change the value, character and livability of the historic homes. Can I get one more second? Okay, the city of Everett has recognized the importance of preserving historic properties. We have standards and historic overlay zones. To preserve and protect these valuable assets, but these new changes proposed for our neighborhood do not seem to be taking this into consideration. Everett twenty forty-four decisions will shape the future of our city, and we hope they will prove that Everett is a city with foresight. That values its heritage and historic properties and seeks to promote quality of life community and vital growing neighborhoods. Along with accommodating reasonable growth. So thank you, and we will have a petition for y'all in a couple days.
Thank you for your comments. Um, if you uh, would like to public, uh, give, you would like to give public comment, please turn in your forms over here. Um, Russell Joe, you're up next.
Good evening and thank you, Russell Joe, Master Builders Office located in Bellevue. I want to thank the entire commission and staff for the thoughtful consideration and the debate you've been having to uh. Get past or get over each of the steps uh, in this process. It's been a, a good uh. Experience for me to watch, and I hope it's been a, a good experience for you as you've tried to make recommendations that will reach the housing jobs and. Population goals of the plan. I'm gonna just do a couple of comments on the development code. Um, on the ADU subject, uh, thank you for placing in um, uh. Language that makes sure that the frontage requirements do not get triggered for ADUs uh, if certain conditions are made. The setbacks are also important for uh, ADUs in the, particularly in the back alley. And um, we do appreciate that the impact fees have been recognized as needing to be uh, reduced when a ADU is properly defined. On the inclusionary zoning subject, um, we understand it's a small area south of town that does need to have some. Um, changes perhaps made. Um, it's an experiment of some sort, because you have one small area that you're changing. The rest of the area is not being changed, so you'll have an opportunity to see if it works or it doesn't work. We would encourage uh, the planning staff to make a note to try to look at this perhaps in five years to see if it has worked. And uh, whether or not it needs to be tweaked and changed so that it can be effective. We do appreciate that the one unit requirement does not go into effect until you get after, till you get past the sixth unit. As you may recall from some of my comments, the herd study for Seattle indicated that you only get an effective, a price. Uh, a unit that is feasible if you get to fourteen or fifteen units. So if you allow a project at fifteen, you're perhaps seeing the target where one of those could be built. The question I do have is, will that unit be a sixty percent AMI unit? An eighty percent AMI unit only if there's owner occupancy? Or will it just be an eighty percent AMI unit um, without uh, any restrictions as long as it is built? We do appreciate the fifty percent um, in lieu opportunity of seven dollars and fifty cents for every square foot. Um, and we do also appreciate the fact that there will be um, uh, uh. Waiting for the, those fees to go into effect until six months after the certificate of occupancy is, is done. Overall, we think that this is a great opportunity for Everett to find a way to accommodate the growth, jobs and people that will be coming here. Uh, the housing section uh, is not everything that master builders would like to see, but it is a solution that fits. Uh, Everett's unique situation. I want to thank you for your hard work on this project.
Thank you, and up next we have uh, Laura Gurley.
Good evening, commissioners, uh, Laura Gurley, Port of Everett staff. Uh, I just really wanted to thank um, especially Yorick and Allison. For doing the incredible outreach that they did with us. Um, we had a lot of, a lot of things to go through. Um. As Yorick mentioned, we still have some height things to flesh out, but um, especially just kudos to you guys with the. Helping us work with the neighborhood through the port compatibility area and um. Appreciate all of you guys with the feedback and the patience as we worked through that, because we, we actually got there, so. That's a, a very, and I think some of the folks are here, so I appreciate that all around. Um. And also kudos to um, Tom Hood and Ryan Sass with the uh, Public Works and Transportation Group who. You know, we had comments for them as well, and um, overall, it was a, a great experience and um, very different from past staff. So this was very refreshing and we're grateful to have been part of it. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, and it sounds like your comments were perfectly timed. Um, can we get uh, Todd Deutzman? Deuce man, sorry. Can you hold on just one second?
Interestingly enough, in my thirties or forties, you would never have caught me dead. Watching one of these meetings, coming to one of these meetings, listening to one of these meetings. And then the last three or four years, uh, you know, I've gotten to spend some time with uh, Russell. And uh, and York and spending it with builders and developers and people trying to create housing. I don't know how many of you guys own a home. Yet we are all about homeownership. Obviously, I create a living of making homeownership. Yet I believe it's extremely important to be able to paint your own walls and enjoy the uh, your own setting, not living necessarily in apartment. Not that I'm putting that down yet. I just feel there's something about being here and own your own home and having a home. And so these ADUs that were in the DADUs that were able to start uh, doing more and more, I think I'm involved with nine different projects here in the city of. Everett uh, with people that are trying to build wealth, uh, builders trying to create a living for their families. And also everybody gets to provide a home for under six hundred thousand dollars. I think that's a pretty amazing situation here in the city of Everett. Uh, the question I do have is, I try to read through this stuff and try to understand it, and quite honestly, guys. I'm pretty intelligent individual and a lot of it just flies right over my head, so um, uh. The biggest thing that um, I was concerned about is the uh, the, to be able to park tandemly. In a lot of the uh, on the alleys, to be able to, and it, and if you guys drive down the alleys, there's a bunch of s- s- crummy alleys. In the city of Everett. And so I think by putting these DADUs back in the, on some of these alleys, it really makes things much better. And uh, so my question is, um, York, did you, are, are, is, are we still gonna be able to do the tandem parking? Back there, Dave, uh, I work with a guy named Dave Gardner, who I know you'll know well. Because we don't have the parking on the front, per the state law, we still have to apply, provide two parking spots in the back. Are we still gonna be able to do tandem parking there? Um, and then we have one spot for the uh, the DADU.
Thank you. I, I remembered I was gonna look back to that after hearing from someone else on the same question in chapter. It's nineteen thirty-four, one twenty, parking area design and construction. There is a tandem parking section. There were some changes to state law, although that's not what drove this. We have tandem parking is allowed in any amount for non-required residential parking, but for required event. Parking, each space must have independent access. The parking requirement is one space per dwelling. So the kind of the old style of tandem parking is you needed two, and so you can have your two for your own households in tandem. Um, you can still do that, but if you had an ADU and a house, you couldn't strand the ADU's parking spot. Behind the one house's parking spot. So a little bit. A little bit of yes, a little bit of no.
Okay, so the front unit, the principal unit would be able to tandem park behind it, yet the ADU, ADU could not tandem park.
If you were in a, if you were outside of the reduction area for. Parking and you required one full spot for each of the main unit and the accessory unit, um, they couldn't. They would need to be side by side.
Okay, uh, probably need to get some clearer, I don't want to spend the time here and wait and waste your guys' time. I just probably need to get some clarification, a couple drawings, because I'm pretty rudimentary there.
Yes, yes, I'll pull that together.
Thank you for all the work that you guys do. I really appreciate it, and it's absolutely entertaining to watch this and become involved in it more and more, so. Appreciate all your time, and Charles, you're retiring from this?
Uh, apparently.
There we go, so anyhow, yeah, good stuff. Thank you very much, guys. I really appreciate it.
All right, uh, do we have any comment online?
We do, we have two individuals, so David, if you could please unmute and state your full name. And you have three minutes to speak when you're ready, if you are there.
Yes, uh, David Koenig. Uh, Everett resident. I provided uh, a document with detailed. I provided a document with details, and I'm going to provide you with the highlights. The first request is to zone the Madrona Avenue area neighborhood residential constraint. The proposed comprehensive plan states that the purpose of the neighborhood residential constraint is to provide for housing and complementary uses at a lower urban residential scale in areas that have limited access and adjacent to wooden areas. The proposed regulations state the purpose of the neighborhood residential constraint zone is to reduce risk from hazards in areas with limited access by providing for continual continuation of established development patterns and limiting growth potential. The request was outlined in maps provided to you between the wooded area Howarth Park to the wooded area of Glenwood Creek Stream Corridor and requesting neighborhood residential constraints because it meets the standards that are proposed in the comprehensive plan and the regulations. The state of Washington gave direction for cities to develop standards. They said to use design standards to ensure housing fits the character of the neighborhood. The proposed regulations fall short of this direction in some instances and the direction envisioned twenty fifty in the adopted city comprehensive plan. Some specifics are vehicle access and parking off the street where alleys exist should not allow even for required parking access from the street. In reduction of setbacks where there is excess right of way should be outlined with criteria and map before this goes forward. There is no knowledge at this point where these areas are. Adopt the recommended floor air ratios provided in the state ordinance that have been provided to cities to implement mental housing. I provided those FAR ratios. Standards keep the scale of buildings reasonable in neighborhoods and maintain the character of the neighborhoods as required by the state law. Planning Schmiz asked for studies to justify standards. A research group headed by Christopher Alexander authored the book Pattern Language. Their findings found out that towns, buildings, and people function best. They found out that six feet is the minimum dimension for balconies and porches for them to get used. They also found there's necessity of doors, entrances, and windows oriented to the street. This is for safety reasons, community engagement, and connection to the world. This effort is very significant, and design standards are needed so the implementation is successful and affordable housing is acceptable to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, and that actually concludes our public commenters online.
All right, can we get a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close.
Second.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutledge?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
So how do we want to move forward? Do we want to have a discussion first and then move the resolution and amend? Or what, should we move the resolution and then amend and discuss during amendments? Or?
All, all of those work. So I've got a resolution to put on the screen. It's a series of recitals. They're almost identical to what is in the proposed ordinances for the comprehensive plan. So if you've taken a look at those, you've seen it, but I can put it up on the screen. I suppose we could, someone could move the ordinance and then it's on the floor. And then the rest of the meeting is discussion before a vote, but question and answer before we take that step is fine with me too. For them, it's a resolution.
Yes.
I, I will propose a motion that we kind of back to the sunlighting or the daylight, sun setting, one of the suns. But I do, I, I think based on the difficulty of this and potential for it to be punitive and, but it could be successful. I mean, I, you know, to hold them to the fire, I would love to have some kind of a bracket around there. So maybe, you know, for three years, it, it, they, they're forced to either redo it or some kind of, you know, prove some kind of standard that it was successful or not. So, but my intention is to make that proposal, and then if you could help me out figuring out where it would be most appropriate to make it.
Yeah, I, it sounds like we may want to move the resolution and then you motion to amend the resolution. Does that sound about right?
Let me show you what it is. So again, this is almost all identical language to the proposed ordinances that the council has in their agenda packet for tomorrow. Explanatory language, this is done under requirements of the State Growth Management Act. We have started this with a project scoping process in February of twenty twenty-two and requested comments on a scope of environmental impact statement. June of twenty twenty-three, we advanced a set of specific amendment requests and established three growth alternatives to study in the project and in the environmental impact statement process. The, the disposition of those amendments is detailed in a staff memo dated May thirtieth, which is up on everatwa.gov/2044. The planning commission led the review and development of the comprehensive plan and development regulations, including holding forty-two briefings and workshops on various aspects of the plan and regulations before holding public hearing and deliberating on June third, twenty twenty-five. That one is worth reading all the way through. Presumably, we'll adopt a resolution that says something. Then this was a determination of significance and a supplemental environmental impact statement were prepared. Part of a phased route, phased review. I don't know that we've talked about this much, but the Puget Sound Regional Council adopted Vision twenty fifty in twenty twenty, which is a regional plan that made Everett a metropolitan city. They did a lot of environmental review region-wide for the implications of that regional growth strategy and for an overall regional growth pattern that includes substantial growth in Everett. We incorporated that environmental analysis by reference as well as Snohomish County's environmental impact statement. We are essentially nested within that regional framework, so this Jay talks a little bit about that. Issued a final environmental impact statement on June third. We will by the end of tonight anyways. Department of Commerce, we provided notice of, notice of pending adoption of this periodic update on April seventh and completed the sixty-day state agency review period. Five P M. Today was the end of that. This periodic update is consistent with the Growth Management Act planning goals and the Growth Management Act, consistent with and supportive of the Everett Comprehensive Plan. The regulations are, we followed our own procedural requirements in Everett Municipal Code and a planning director interpretation from twenty twenty-three. Procedural requirements in state law and agency rules, public participation. Procedural requirements for development regulations, and then we have required factors that we must find to adopt an updated comprehensive plan. Circumstances have changed since the last periodic update. And then for development regulations, consistent with the comprehensive plan bears a substantial relation to the public health, safety, or welfare. The reason we're doing this promotes the best long-term interests of the Everett community. These are all requirements in city code for us to find, and then that there's substantial new information since the last one. Deep breaths. Now therefore, and this would be potentially the enacting clause of the resolution. Planning Commission recommends that the city council approve the comprehensive plan and development regulation attached here too. And then those exhibits, one and two, are the May thirty drafts that you have been provided. So amending this can be done in any way. We could add, and this is in words, so I can type some things in here. We can add.
Subject two.
Subject two with the following comments, with the following recommendations, anything like that. Thank you for bearing with me on that. I believe there was a motion about to be made before I started talking.
Yes, if someone would like to make a motion to move this resolution twenty-five oh one?
Subject two?
You, someone needs to make the motion, then you can amend it.
So moved to make the recommendation on resolution twenty-five oh one.
Second.
All right.
I make a motion to amend the motion as proposed to include that the inclusionary zoning sunset or inclusionary zoning rules as proposed with sunset three years from the date of the adoption of this amendment or this proposal.
Second.
All right, any discussion? I guess I'll, I'll start with saying like I, I, I do think this is potentially needed, though honestly, I'm uncomfortable with the proposed inclusionary zoning regulations existing regardless. I really deeply fear that in our efforts to try to help out this community that we are really going to harm them. Every, every day that we are not building as much units of housing as we can is just another day that people in that neighborhood are going to be priced out. And the idea of five years of potentially little development, I, that just seems to me like another way to further price out and exclude people in that neighborhood, especially knowing how many of those folks down there along Casino Road are renters. That it doesn't, doesn't matter how, how, the, the price of their home value, you know, that we're in a wider regional housing crisis and the landlords are going to raise the rent regardless of whether there's inclusionary zoning for their units or whatever. Any, any further discussion? I can't be the only one.
So I think as an amendment, you're deliberating and then deciding on this amendment before moving on to potentially another one?
Yeah. Should take a vote on the amendment if we're done with the discussion then.
Yeah, any final discussion before we move on to a vote? Okay.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutledge?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Any further amendments?
I was, I don't know if it's amendment, I guess, probably should have mentioned it earlier, but the height restrictions for the ADUs on the non-alleys, that there's a difference on the height, twenty-eight.
I think there is not anymore.
There's not anymore. Am I looking at the wrong, there's somebody documents.
Yeah, we're, that would be in chapter twenty-two.
I think it was, I know I had a table twenty-two dash two. Where there were eighteen foot, or am I looking at the wrong document then?
Twenty-two. Here, no. Yes, okay, should have known that right away. Detached accessory residential buildings are garages and sheds.
Okay, so I'm looking at the wrong, okay, I just want to make sure.
Yep, that is, we've got to find a different term for that because that's always gets people. Accessory dwelling units will be able to meet the height of the zone.
Okay, I just want to double check because I read through that and then it, I was kind of stuck on what that was.
Yes, we do have, I, this is highlighted, so maybe it was changed since the April seven version, but the struck language on number three, I'll zoom in a little bit. This is what it used to be, but at least as of today, no limitation on the height of an ADU.
Then I'm fine.
Any further amendments? All right, we'll move on to discussion of the amended resolution. Any discussion on the amended resolution?
What does it look like if we pull all of the inclusionary zoning and that's our recommendation? I mean, let's talk about it, right? Like if that's the position of this body.
I would support it. I would have recommended that if I thought I had the support.
I would support that.
Well, it sounds like we might want to try to do another amendment.
I propose we make a recommendation or make a proposal that we remove the section defining inclusionary zoning be removed from the proposal as, as presented.
Say with the following exception, the inclusionary zoning regulations of nineteen oh nine, whatever it is.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
So moved.
Discussion.
So on this, on the inclusionary zoning, are we just talking about the affordable housing part? That's, that's, that's what we're talking about. I can't remember, was there other things included in that about like, thinking of the Casino Square Business Park?
That really wasn't.
That wasn't part of it, right? This was just the residential aspect. Okay. I just want to make sure that are we giving a voice to the people that still came in here? That said, they want, I'm not saying it's just the right thing, but are we, are we, are we giving them something? That's my only question.
In my opinion, we're giving something that, them something that is, may harm them more and will delay them from something good for, you know, to actually take advantage of the property out there. Again, it's, it's, it's mixed at best. And it often causes reduction in the proposed affordable aspect of it. And it, it's shown to increase market rate. And so it's just kind of failed on both sides. And, and again, it's very specific to the success is how it's applied and the, and the quality of the, the incentives to do this and everything and getting that right mix. So it's intense in that, and somebody's got to manage that. And so there's that problem, and we have to trust that that happens.
Right.
And there's no reason to trust or think that that wouldn't, but it's also very dependent on the market. I think the examples of where it was successful were in situations where there was an increasing market.
Is this going to be an increasing market?
Well, even if I said yes or no, I mean, you can't guarantee that, right? For the life of us. But the question is, what, what are, what voice are we giving them? Maybe it feels like we're taking something away, but I'm not sure really this was the right thing for them. I certainly thought the, so vary the planning, I mean, working with them, certainly trying to figure out maintaining their commercial presence there.
Yeah, I like that quite a bit.
You know, I just, I, you know, it's going to take some really creative thought, and it's going to take the, the city, I think, to, to step in there and do that. Hopefully, there's nonprofit groups that do that. I just don't feel like using the inclusionary zoning is the right tool. But you're, but I don't think we're taking anything away because I think what we're giving them was not fair and good to them.
Sounds good. So then I would just continue to urge the department that, that we don't let this go, that we continue to, like, we've talked about monitor, sun setting. You said that you could add it essentially to your docket, so I'm urging that you do.
So is this essentially removing nineteen oh nine seventy, right?
Yeah, and just to echo Commissioner Ballard's points, I really think that like the, if we're trying to do our best to help this community, and I, I really, really feel that like, you know, the causes of this housing crisis aren't, and the causes of the high rents that people along Casino Road are facing aren't necessarily because people are coming into Casino Road and gentrifying it. It's because we are facing a region-wide housing crisis. And unfortunately, you know, I, I think ten, fifteen years ago, we could have talked about ways that we could do zoning to mitigate the gentrification and displacement of people. But I think we're just so far deep into this that like, I, I, I just don't see how we do this beyond just building more units.
I would agree. The, the only way to reduce costs is, is supply. I mean, it's just reality. The other thing that's, you know, you're kind of like, it's, it, this really, I agree with Commissioner Ballard. I don't think it's going to fix the problem. I think it'll exacerbate when it's all said and done.
And so often I see these types of proposals for communities of color where it, it honestly feels in some ways that it's taking investment away from them. You know, when I, I hear about talks about the, like, concerns around light rail in this community, I, I think about like, why is it that whenever a community of color gets the opportunity to have this kind of infrastructure? the opportunity to have this kind of infrastructure that could bring wealth and success into their neighborhood, that we suddenly hear this deluge of, well, gentrification, displacement, and this idea that like, in order for the, the poor parts of our city to succeed, they have to stay poor and they have to stay in, in this place where they're not receiving investment because we're too afraid of displacing people. I just, i, it, it just doesn't seem, sorry, I'm rambling by this point, but I have a lot of thoughts.
I think sometimes it's hard for people to hear that it really is supply that is the driving force in the housing issues. Because even when I talk to people in the community, it's like, oh, we need affordable housing. Yeah, we do, but we also just literally need housing. You need affordable, but then you need above affordable and higher than that. And, you know, if you don't have a diverse set of housing, you just don't have housing, which then just drives every price up, which was what we've talked about here. So I hear you.
And a number that I think it was either rethink housing or at some point earlier in this project, I believe it was Chris Collier came in and presented us some figures and like one of the numbers that really sticks with me is just the fact that like 20, the top 20% of income earners in Seattle are earning an average of $440,000 a year. And if we are in a place where we don't have enough housing, why would a landlord sit there and not raise their rents as high as possible to try to get that market? Any further discussion?
We did some tinkering to the language and can go any way that you want. At first we had accept the following, but that may not jump out as, as much as this, including the following recommendations. The inclusionary zoning regulations contained in 1909070 should be removed. And then if you wanted to add a statement of some sort to that or not.
I, I would suggest that there's several anti-displacement strategies that were outlined in the rethink housing plan, things like write a first refusal or community land trusts. You know, there, there are other ways that we can tackle, tackle this issue or rather the city can tackle this issue. I don't think there's necessarily ways that we here can, but, so maybe something along those lines suggesting that they look back at some of those other strategies.
Implement anti-displacement, anti-dis, anti-displacement measures such as the ones identified in rethink housing?
I think it's really more of a comprehensive sub area plan than specifically anti-displacement.
On a, on a sub area planning effort?
Does that language look fine with everyone? Can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutledge?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
So this then basically nullifies the original amendment one, right? So, all right, just want to make sure we have a clean.
Commissioner Ballard could pull his amendment, his last amendment, yeah.
I've got it to what we've got here.
Yeah, as long as we have a clean proposal.
There was a time we didn't, we'll, we'll never do this without having word up on the screen again. It's sort of trying to, now amending the amendments.
All right, any further discussion or amendments before we move on to the final vote? Going once, going twice, going thrice? All right, let's move on.
There's a couple of things that are still hanging up there. We worked on, does that have to go through this process or the?
Any remaining issues, some of the little, little ones that are hanging out there, the city council still has the final authority on this. And if the, if the commission wants to weigh in on any of those, you can. I think there are some things that we're planning to work with the council on, pretty short list that I think.
Other than due to the timing requirements by the state, we just need to move on and between now and the final vote with the city council, all these should be fixed by that point, I would think. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion or comment? The, the final comment that I'll have before we move on to a vote, or I guess a question. Besides me, who else is a renter? All right, just wanted to.
I used.
Well, with that, let's move on to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutledge?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
All right, well, that was a lot of work, years and years of work and just thank you again, everyone. And just, you know, as it's my final time up here, I just thank you all. This has been such a wonderful work environment and really glad to see the amazing progress that we've done. Any final comments before I, I use the gavel to adjourn us?
Real quick, what are we doing next meeting? And when is it? I know we've talked about it, but.
June 17th is out, so July, I don't know what we're doing.
Great. There will be a party in July. You will be invited.
I love a good party.
There will be more work to do, per cert, but for now we can relax for the rest of this month. And if July is the day after the holiday or something, maybe it's not till second half of July. There's not pressing business that I know of.
Well, I hope you get some time off.
Thank you all for great advice, great questions, great attention to detail throughout this entire process. This, I, I really feel like this has been led by the planning commission and we've benefited a lot from it. Thank you for all the hard work and all the late nights. It is really impressive to watch.
I do have a question relative to the comments about the transition zone between the historic districts and higher zoned areas. Will there be an opportunity to address that in a finely tuned way in the future?
Of course. The, the, this, the city council still has a public hearing on June 11th and still has the opportunity to shape the plan. So it's not total, it's not finished yet in this process, but thereafter, a lot of these things are wide open for continued adjustment.
Because I think we, we obviously need to move on in this process. It's taken quite some time, but I also think that recognizing the importance of character of our neighborhoods is something that shouldn't be missed in this process.
Yeah, I would love to, in one of those meetings later on this year, work with this commission on a work program now that we can have a little bit more freedom, staff, commission, and others to choose what we focus our energy on rather than this mandated project. I think that'll be a really interesting conversation. If you had something to dive into and spend four, six months on, what would that be?
Well, with that, we are adjourned.